Meeting board, please. DJ, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great liberty from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Martha, would you lead us on prayer tonight?
Honored to. Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight, I just want to thank you for Montevista. I want to thank you for her people, for her staff, for government. Father, I pray that you will lead us with wisdom, compassion, and pure devotion as we serve the people of Montevista. Cause us to reason together, to reject adversity, but rather to seek your will and your plan on everything that we do. And I pray this in the name of your son, Jesus, Messiah. Amen.
Thank you, Martha. Roll call.
Counselor Foster?
Good blues.
Counselor Locke?
Here.
Mayor Protem Segala?
Here.
Mayor Becker?
Here.
Counselor Lorenz is absent this evening and has been excused.
Okay. Any modifications to the agenda?
No, sir.
Approval of consent agenda, minutes of regular meeting from September fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, review and approval of counts payable.
Move to approve the approval of the consent agenda, minutes of regular meetings from September fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, and review and approval of counts payable.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, approval of consent agenda for minutes of regular meeting from September fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, and review and approval of counts payable. Is there any more discussion? Unida?
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segala?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the consent agenda?
We have no proclamations, communications, and appointments, so we'll go to citizen comments and special presentation. Citizen comments, city council will welcome your unscheduled comments, please limit the comments to three minutes, council will not take action at the same meeting. Okay, we'll go to scheduled appearances. In order to move the question to the agenda, you have to file appropriate paperwork with the city clerk no later than noon on a Monday prior to the meeting. Military care packages. Kelly Avila.
Hello, everybody. Um, we're doing-
State your name, please, and then be sure and write down.
All right, Kelly Avila and Corey Avila. And we are here to see if you guys would like to help us with our care packages that we will be sending to the local military men and women. We'll be sending those out the beginning of November. We're packaging them on the fifth, so we'll be sending them out after that. Right now, we're probably sending twenty boxes that we have addresses to, and I still do have a few more that we have to contact, so.
What are you needing help with?
Um, we do have a list of ideas. We've been told that they all like food. So, um, when we do that, we like for the end, or the packages to be individual packages, so. That's a big one, is the food, so.
And, um, is it like a donation, monetary donation to purchase food, or?
It could be either way. There's a list of, can I give this to you guys? That's a list of ideas that we have, or it could be monetary as well.
Okay. Can we get a copy of that? We can.
You guys can actually have that.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Would it be easier for you just? He asked about monetary, would that be easier than you could just look at what you need it, or?
We can do that. We plan on going, um, I think the Friday before we do our care packages, and we'll purchase stuff from Walmart.
Is, is that something you guys were already doing? So like if we do a monetary donation, it's not gonna like be troublesome?
No, we have that date set up already to go and purchase some stuff, so.
What is your budget? What's your, what's your dream budget?
Honestly, we've never really talked about it.
So you said you have, have how many packages ready to go?
Right now, we have about twenty names. Um, I do have maybe about ten names that I do need to still contact, so.
So a total of about thirty?
Yes.
Do you have an idea of what each box costs?
I'm thinking, because the packaging is close to like twenty-two, I think, is what it is, because we're doing the large box. I'm pretty for sure that's-
And that's contents and shipping and everything?
And that's just shipping.
It's twenty-two dollars?
Yes.
To ship the one box?
Just to ship a box. Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wow.
The contents are probably twenty to thirty dollars, so.
And you're throwing arms out, so that's not my idea, okay.
Yeah, so.
So she looking?
That shipping is what, you know, gets us, we decided this year if, because we do have some, like our daughter, she, well, our daughter and son, they are, one is stationed in, at Fort Carson. He comes down, so he's gonna wait and get his package when he comes home. So we'll try to like cut some box or packages and give to ones that we can, so, yeah.
So I think, uh, we're just doing a little research here, so we can see what we can do for you.
All right, thank you, guys. We really appreciate your guys' support.
And we thank you guys for what you guys do, because they get sent off and sometimes they're forgotten, you know? And not until five years later when they come back and it's like, where you been?
Yeah.
You know, and it's like, oh, I was serving, you know? It's like, oh, really? Nobody ever knows.
Yes, and if you guys know of anybody that is leaving, because we are still doing our ceremonies, we're, we find out a lot of them when it's too late, so we would like to give them a ceremony before they leave.
I really do like what you do, keeping the youth that leaves here connected to here.
Yes.
While they're gone, so they want to come back.
Yeah. We, at the national night out, we had spoke to the Army recruiter, and they're wanting to do like a big one in the spring for all of the valley that is leaving, so we'll be coordinating that with them in the spring if they have any recruits that are leaving. So we'll let you guys know on that.
Will that be happening here?
Yes, because we wanted to keep it here, because we think that's a great place at the Faith and Play Memorial Park, to have it there.
Thank you.
So, and the recruiter, he thought that would be a good idea to have it there, so,
question for you, just, we all support Alamosa, but is there any way that you can purchase as much as you can right here in money?
Yes, we can do that. Yeah. We have, we can go to Walmart, or, um, to Jack's, Top Value. Sorry, I'm used to calling it Jack's.
Yeah.
And Safeway, yes. So we could do that.
That would be awesome.
That would be appreciated, to keep the tax money here.
Correct.
And you would be, to add to that, you'd be mailing from, from this post office?
Yes, that's where we-
That's where we've always, always been.
Okay. I, I figured so, but I just wanted-
Thank you, sir.
Are you all structured as a, as a nonprofit, or how do you operate?
We are in the process of getting it switched over-
Thank you.
-to a nonprofit, because when we first started, I didn't know too much about how to do any of that, but Michelle Velazquez is helping us get all that situated. So.
Would you be willing, if I could find a willing nonprofit, to let them take the mon- take the money for you and then pay you out of that?
What do you mean on that?
An existing non, if you're not a nonprofit yet, an existing nonprofit can, in some cases, take the donations for you, so that they can be tax deductible?
Oh, okay.
And then that nonprofit, they usually charge a small fee percentage, like, I don't know, a couple percent or something?
Okay.
Um, and then they pay it back to, they, they pay it back to you until your nonprofit comes through. This is just a question, maybe I should just ask you later, but if that's something, huh?
Sorry. I said it was muddy laundry, I'm sorry.
You know, I mentioned that in the bank meeting, and that didn't go well at all.
Yeah, I, um-
Because that's what it sounds like.
Yeah.
But no, what, what it really is, is, it's so that people can make donations to you-
Correct.
But you're not a nonprofit yet, so those donations are not tax deductible.
Right.
So instead-
Okay, I got you, yeah.
Like, they, they would make contributions to a nonprofit, and an account would be set up underneath that nonprofit's bank account that would be yours.
Yes, we could do that.
And then, okay, that's, that's how that all works, and it actually is legal, it's not money laundering. But I had the same thought, so, you know, when I was introduced to this.
Last year, we donated?
Yes.
Do you remember what that was?
Um, I think it was a-
It was a thousand?
It was a thousand?
Mm-hmm.
Last year?
Um, ninety percent sure on that.
Yes, I believe.
That's kind of the figure I had in my head.
And was that last year, or was that earlier this year?
It was last year.
Because it's gonna cost them almost seven hundred dollars just to ship.
So I would make a motion for another thousand dollars this year. Um, if we can somehow maybe get that tied in, uh, how far along are you guys in your, in that process, do you know?
We have, we're waiting on the paperwork. We, what was it, a couple weeks ago? That Michelle had submitted it, and now we're waiting to get the paperwork back for them, from them, so then I can turn it back in.
You talking about Michelle Velazquez?
Yes, Velazquez, yes.
Velazquez. Okay.
So I would be, uh, willing to donate another thousand dollars, um, to, uh, to the military care packages.
Okay, thank you.
Did I make a motion?
Hmm?
Was that a motion?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that was a motion.
I wasn't sure if I-
I'll second that.
Because I prolonged it a little bit, sorry.
So we need a second.
She seconded, Locke seconded.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
It was kind of quiet.
I'm, I'm so shy, you know?
Yes.
Soft spoken.
I have a motion in a second to approve you having military parents and supporters a thousand dollars for their, um, military care packages. Is there any more discussion?
I will probably be the odd man out here. Um, I'm not against what they do, I think what they do is an excellent thing. Uh, my concern is that I don't think the city should be in the business of supporting charities. Um, that's just a personal opinion. There's some two hundred charities in the San Luis Valley area, and I think that we open a Pandora's box when we start picking and choosing who we support and who we don't. As I said, I have nothing against what you do.
Understandable.
Don't we already support things like prom night, uh, sometimes community fund, sometimes, I mean, just various things that have come before us? Veterans, we've, we've supported veterans groups last year.
We will get a list of that, but as we have a motion in a second, so. Unida?
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segala?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to donate one thousand dollars to the month military parents' care packages with three yays, one nay.
Okay, thank you guys so much.
Thank you guys for being here.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, guys. But if you wouldn't mind, like, get us a list of what we've done in the past.
And then, I guess, too, um, we can find out, um, what we've been made of so far.
No. He didn't throw the dial out here, nothing.
More Wicker Ways and Resolution on ordinances. Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash ten, an ordinance for the regulation of traffic by the City of Montevista, Colorado, adopting by reference the Montevista Model Traffic Code, code repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith and providing penalties for violation thereof. Let me take this.
You're up, sir.
Mr. Farris, you've been working diligently on this.
Well, I sort of promised the council you would get this done by the end of the year, so I wanted to buy about what I promised, um, mayor and members of the council, so all of this actually looks a lot more complicated than it really is. We've had the Model Traffic Code, which is a twenty-nine version, in force and effect for some time, and, uh, about once every, oh, ten years now, CDOT comes out with another version of the Model Traffic Code, an updated version. So we have not yet adopted that, even though our code, uh, says it's, uh, what's in place is the Model Traffic Code, which is two thousand nine version, so that's what we're doing here, is the latest version, twenty twenty version of the Model Traffic Code. Um, I've communicated, but GG wanted me to have this as a priority also, and certainly the chief wanted it as a priority, uh, to get this done. So, uh, what you have before you is, uh, the ordinance itself, adopting the Model Traffic Code, the twenty twenty version, and, uh, we can, uh, do this by title only unless you would like me to read all eight pages.
Please, please. I'm just kidding.
Okay, so, uh, this is an ordinance for the regulation of traffic by the City of Montevista, Colorado, adopting by reference the Montevista Model Traffic Code, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith and providing penalties for violation thereof. And so the first part is the adoption of it, the second part is the penalties. I would, uh, mention in the penalties, we've put the penalty, the surcharges now at fifty dollars, uh, they were at thirty-five, um, I keep up with, uh, inflation and so forth. Um, and I think fifty is gonna be the norm for the valley, uh, I think South Fork is doing the same thing, and I believe Dillonworth's doing the same thing. Uh, I don't know what Alamosa's doing, but the others seem to be aligning their surcharges at fifty. Um, municipalities use those surcharges for the benefit of police training and, uh, police equipment and that type of thing. Um, so, uh, we have phrased the Model Traffic Code in terms of it being published actually by Montevista, because what we do is go in and modify the, um, CDOT version of the Traffic Code and delete those portions that are not applicable, uh, such as they're referring to counties or other, um, governmental entities and things like that. Uh, so it's, uh, we try to be as specific as possible to, uh, the city in, uh, the final version here. Um, the Traffic Code itself, and I've, um, tried to economize too on the printing here, we got a estimate back from O and V that it was gonna cost about seven hundred and fifty bucks, and, uh, Cassandra told me I took for very little over here, just the paper and so forth, so I think we're gonna save all that money, and we will come out with a publication like this, um, and three copies of this will be on file with the city clerk. Uh, the, um, PD will have six copies for their use, and I'll have a copy, so there'll be a total of ten copies on that. Uh, what we've got to do on this is go through, um, first of all, uh, you will set tonight the notice of the public hearing, and, uh, here's a copy of the notice itself that will be published. Nida is going to send us out right away to paper, because if we get it in this evening, they can start their publications next week, and that'll allow us to meet the timeline definitions. We've got to have, uh, one publication that's at least fifteen days before the hearing, and another that's at least eight days before the hearing. So, uh, they'll publish, uh, this coming week and next week, and then we can go to hearing on the third of November at our regular council meeting then. And, uh, then after hearing, we'll go into final reading also by title only, uh, and that'll complete that process, uh, and then the, uh, code will be available in booklet form. So, uh, tonight, we place this matter before you for consideration of passage of, and it's ordinance number, what, uh, Gigi? Um, Nida?
Oh, it's two thousand, I forgot. Excuse me, I'm sorry about that. Twenty twenty-two dash ten.
Twenty twenty-two dash ten. Ordinance twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-two dash ten, uh, passes on first reading. Any questions by the council?
Jean, on, um, I'm in two on penalties, on section two on penalties. Um, E, violation provisions, deemed traffic offenses, nine, section nineteen oh three, stopping for school buses, is that correct, or should it be not stopping for school buses?
Well, it's probably, let's see, it's nineteen oh-
Nineteen oh three.
Nineteen oh three. The way it's probably worded is, let me grab it. For itself. Nineteen oh three. Eighteen oh five. Okay, nineteen. Nineteen oh three, and the copy here is school buses dash stops dash signs dash passing.
Okay.
Is that what you have?
Well, what I'm reading in front of me says stopping for school buses, and when you look at the rest of, uh, everything else that's listed as an offense, it is things like, it's a negative, careless driving, no insurance, eluding or attempting to elude a, a police officer. Stopping for school buses, and I'm just curious if that's the correct wording?
The-
Because, I mean, that makes it sound like stopping for a school bus is wrong.
Just looking at, you're looking at the ordinance itself?
Yeah.
Okay. So.
And he's right, it does say stopping for, I mean, I, I've read it and, and knew what it meant, but-
Well, I, I know what it's trying to communicate, but I'm not sure that it's, that's why I was asking for just clarification on it.
It never occurred to me to pick it apart like that, but it's possible somebody could. So I'm glad that you did.
I'm just looking at the, uh, penalty part, are you looking at?
Uh, I'll tell you what page number I'm on, if the page number's lined up, but because I'm in a packet, it's not the same thing.
Two.
Yeah, I'm in, I'm in under section two, under penalties. Uh, go down to item, uh, E, sub item nine.
E. Okay, um, well, I think that, I think what that really is, is just a capsule of what the, the subject matter is, is stopping for school buses. When you get to, uh, nineteen oh three, and you read it in the code itself, the Model Traffic Code, it's entitled school buses dash stops dash signs dash passing, so it goes through the whole subject matter there. And I think this is just, um, you know, it's just like, nine fourteen oh nine above, no insurance. Well, that's really, when you look at fourteen oh nine, for example, uh, let's see, um, fourteen oh nine would say compulsory insurance dash penalty dash legislative intent. So this is, this is basically, uh, just a subject matter that you've got in the ordinance itself, referring to the section. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that, that makes sense, because, uh, as I just simply read over this, it made it look like that stopping for a school bus was an offense.
Yeah. Stopping for a school bus is, is the subject matter, and the section number refers to what's in the Model Traffic Code itself.
Okay, that, that makes sense, I can accept that.
All right.
It needs blessing. Well, that's, it needs blessing. You guys are gonna miss me next, in two weeks.
Any other questions?
No, for me, sir. Well, I guess my only question is, so we worded this properly?
No.
We are doing the first reading on this, or we're, didn't it goes to public hearing, or we're asking for twenty twenty-two dash ten to go to public hearing?
You're asking for, uh, twenty twenty-two dash ten to go to a public hearing, but you're also passing the ordinance on first reading, because you've got two things to deal with here. You've got the, uh, charter provisions about two readings of the ordinance, and you've also got the code that tells you specifically, in this case, the requirements for passage of the code by reference. So what you're going to get after this is also an amendment to the municipal code in chapter seven that says that you are adopting the, uh, twenty twenty version of the code, beside the, uh, passing the code by reference, okay? So you've got two things you've got to abide by here, you've got to abide by your charter, and you've got to abide by, uh, the, uh, legislative enactment here in the statute. Is that clear as mud?
As mud.
Okay, yep. And you have to do this on all codes that you, uh, adopt by reference to. This is, this is the largest code that you're probably gonna do. Well, it's not the largest code, actually, the, the building codes are a lot bigger and thicker than this, that you've adopted by reference.
So you need a mo, you need a motion, or if, if, if this is what council wants to do, we need a motion to approve ordinance, I'm not making the motion, I'm just rehearsing, twenty twenty-two dash ten pending a public hearing.
No.
You, you need a motion to approve it on first reading, that's all.
To approve on first reading, then we need a motion to have a public hearing.
And then you need a motion to set a public hearing.
Okay.
Did everybody get a copy of the public hearing now? That's, uh, that's all I have about that.
Okay.
It's good to get it out of the way.
Really.
And I will move that we approve ordinance twenty twenty-two dash ten, an ordinance for the regulation of traffic by the City of Montevista, Colorado, adopted, adopting by reference the Montevista Model Traffic Code, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith and providing penalties for violation thereof. What?
On first reading.
On first reading.
Seconded.
Amen. I am in.
Been moved and seconded to approve on first reading ordinance two zero two two dash ten and ordinance for the regulation of traffic by the city of Monavista, Colorado, adopting by reference the Monavista Model Traffic Code, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith and providing penalties for violations thereof. Is there any more discussion?
Nita?
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve ordinance twenty twenty-two dash ten on first reading.
Give me practice, let's go.
You now need a motion for, to set the public hearing.
Yeah. Trying to figure out how this works. Make a motion for that we hold a public hearing at six P M. on November third of twenty twenty-two at City Hall to discuss the model traffic code.
Seconded.
I do that right?
Been moved and seconded to have a public hearing at six P M. on the third day of November twenty twenty-two at City Hall for the model traffic code. Is there any more discussion?
Okay.
Nita?
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to hold the public meeting for the model traffic code on November third, twenty twenty-two at six P M.
All right. Thank you for all that work, Jean.
Yes, sir.
Contracts, agreements, and leases. Ace Towing for the P D.
Good evening, council. And mayor, chief has asked me to present this to you. Ace Towing Colorado Cajun LLC has offered a number of services for free to the city of Monavista and the Monavista Police Department as a part of an effort to build a quality relationship with the city as well as to ensure the local law enforcement officers can effectively do their duties in a safe and secure environment. In the recent years, these services have been more difficult to secure with traffic slowing due to the pandemic and other outside causes. To help ensure these services for the future, Ace Towing requests a formal primary contract giving Ace Towing the position of primary use and first call for any towing and recovering needs from within the city limits of Monavista. Ace Towing has agreed in the contract, and you all have it in front of you, that they would respond within twenty minutes. Chief wanted me to also let you know that the reason that they have been going with Ace Towing is because they have been on time. They appear on site when called within usually the twenty minutes. And they're always willing to help as were some of the other towing companies are later coming or have not shown up. And this allows them to clear accident scenes, crime scenes, and other areas of investigation as necessary. So tonight, we would ask that you, council, would approve Ace Towing Colorado Cajun LLC primary and first right of refusal for towing and recovery contract for the city of Monavista Police Department.
Do we have a copy of the rates? I see here that the rates are the standard rates for the state. Do we know what those are? Public, Colorado Public Utility Commission's guideline for towing prices.
I do not have a copy of those present, but I'd be more than happy to get you a copy of that.
Okay.
But it's free to the city, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Pricing, paragraph two.
That's what I thought.
Yes.
So it would be the alleged offender that would pay any cost due to that?
That is correct.
Okay.
Move to approve the contract with Ace Towing to be the primary and first right of refusal towing and recovery contract for the city of Monavista.
I'm seconded.
Been moved and seconded that we approve Ace Towing Colorado Cajun LLC primary and first right of refusal towing and recovery contract for the city of Monavista. Is there any more discussion?
Nita?
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries approving Ace Towing Colorado Cajun LLC primary and first right of refusal towing and recovery contract for the city of Monavista.
Willdan Energy Solutions?
Good evening. So I've got a couple of things for you guys today, just looking for your guys' approval. So the first one, you have the contract for Willdan Energy Services. And what we're looking for them to do is to do an energy audit. We've had one of those in the past. This one is set up slightly different to begin with, and actually, the entire structure will eventually be quite different than what we did before. This one starts with no cost, which is what you have in front of you, where they will go through and do an initial scrub and evaluation to see if it's even worth it for them to do an at-cost evaluation of, of our services. We're looking specifically at water and electricity. So are we, we'll do a water rate survey to make sure our water rates are commensurate with everyone else's. We'll be looking at, would it be cost-effective to replace our water meters? Would it be cost-effective to replace our halogen lights out at Sky High with, or sodium, sorry, sodium lights out at Sky High with LEDs? And other ideas and other things that they would come up with to improve our efficiency, which would reduce cost. So the intent at the long term, when they're all said and done, when their next contract comes out, they will help us write grants, they will help us secure funding, whether it's through an energy production contract or a performance contract, or it's through a grant, in trying to reduce all of the output costs that we would generate to nothing. It should all, at the long run, it should all cover itself through payments. So that's kind of what we're looking for. So I'm looking for approval from you guys to ask them to do the free assessment to start off with. And then once they come back with that free assessment and they give that back, that set of information will bring you guys, okay, now this is what it really looks like. This is our actual startup cost, and this is what we're looking to complete our evaluations. So that's, that's the first ask. You guys have the contract in front of your head.
So this is another thing that we're getting, that we're able to be doing for free?
Yes. This has no cost to it at this time.
I am all about free stuff.
So this is just a head nod, or is this a motion? Just a head nod?
This would be a motion, because this is a contract with Willdan. And Willdan, the Colorado Energy Office is now, is kind of the.
Enforcement arm?
Yeah, maybe the enforcement arm. So if they'll do the report, you all then will decide if we're gonna move forward and make any changes. And as a reminder, some of, we are still making payments on the last go-around that we replaced some lights in the boiler system. This one is set up a little differently, whereas the Colorado Energy Office, if Willdan cannot prove the actual savings that we would incur through actual usage, then they'll come back and have to reimburse us.
And they audited it for the first three years. So for the first three years, if it doesn't bounce out as zero, then Willdan must pay the difference.
So at this point, we're just saying, yes, you can proceed, do the report, give it to us, and then we'll decide what, what takes place after that.
And there you'll see that we do have the ability to widen or narrow the scope based on what we desire. So if they come back and say, hey, your boiler really needs to be redone again, no thanks, we just paid for it. We don't need that service. So we have the ability to widen and say, hey, can you also look at? And we also have to say, no, we don't, we're not interested in you reviewing that. So it's, it gives us a lot of leeway on what they evaluate so that we can try to tailor toward our current needs as opposed to what they think might possibly work for us.
And part of the timing in all of this, council, is the fact that some of this stuff is wrapped up, some of these energy efficiency things are wrapped up in all the infrastructure money. And so Willdan did a very nice job of talking about communities where they, they can, they try to look at the grants and stack it up so that this grant will cover this portion, this grant can cover this portion, so that it tries to alleviate any or little out-of-pocket expense for the entity that they're doing this for. And so at this point, there's no, there's no risk in having the report and the evaluation done.
Okay, well, I move that we approve the contract with Willdan Energy Solutions to do an initial once-over on our energy needs.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the contract with Willdan Energy Solutions. Is there any more discussion?
Nita?
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve Willdan Energy Solutions service agreement.
Okay, the next thing I'm asking for is support on a grant. So DOLA has a grant that is specifically designed to look at housing strategies and how to adjust those. And it's a planning grant, so this one will just create, the idea is to review our land use codes, our zoning requirements, and housing density authorizations. And the way the grant's written is, we have five strategies that we're looking at as possibilities to possibly implement into our thing. What it gives us is our housing code has not had a major revision since two thousand and six. It has had several supplemental since then. But typically, we want to look at housing, or at most your codes, every five to seven years is what the planning world asks you to do. So we're a little bit behind in that. So this grant will allow us to make sure our codes are modern, clear, concise, and easy to follow. And that's what we really are looking at, is getting these codes cleaned up. We will probably add some things, change some things to make it a little more user-friendly as far as services go, things that we allow. Inside the grants, I've put a significant amount of money into public engagement because what I think we need, what the planning commission thinks we need, may not be with the community beliefs. So I put a very robust part of that budget into getting some multiple platforms, trying to figure out the best ways to get public engagement. So the overall budget for the project is a hundred thousand dollars with ninety thousand in state funds and ten thousand match from marginal funds, or from our funds. Normally, and I've written that into my twenty twenty-three budget request, normally, it's a twenty-five percent match. After speaking with our regional DOLA manager, I was able to convince them to get us down to a ten percent match. So that saved us about fifteen thousand dollars off of the budget total price. So that way, I can make sure I try to fit it into the twenty twenty-three budget without causing a whole lot of heartburn from other departments. I believe we make this project, that we can make some really positive changes. The Housing Action Plan came out in September, which says that the valley needs four hundred and fifty new homes in the next five to ten years. Of those four hundred and fifty homes, one hundred of those probably need to be in San, or in Al Aran, Monavista, I'm sorry. And that's in the Housing Action Plan, which is based off a needs assessment that was finished in March of twenty-two. So we need homes. And the only way we're gonna be able to do that is by looking at what our codes authorize, what they don't. And then also, we're also working with, trying to figure out how we can increase our infrastructure. And at my last council update, I said, the first grant builds to the second grant. Well, this is the first grant. The second grant is the one that we'll be working on, trying to extend the infrastructure so we can actually build new homes in places we don't currently have them. So that would be the next grant I'll be looking at, probably next grant cycle after I have a little time to breathe. So, so what I'm asking for is your support on that. I've got to be able to say that you guys are supportive of it as part of the grant. So that's what I'm asking for, is for you guys to say that I can do this. And the grant's called IHOP, if you want to make your motion shorter.
I would make a motion for D J. to pursue the IHOP grant.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded to approve D J. going for the IHOP grant. Is there any more discussion?
We need any pancakes out of the deal?
Did he pancakes? No, he didn't give pancakes.
Nita?
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to support D J. in pursuing the IHOP grant.
Thanks, guys.
Go forth and conquer.
Good job, D J. Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Rob? How's everybody? Tonight, in front of you, I have an independent contractors agreement between the city and our airport consultancy aviation planning group. This is task five. If you remember back in June, you guys approved the award for the fuel farm out of the airport. This, as we move into construction, the notice of receipt was issued two weeks ago. So this is a task number five, which moves us and our consultants into the construction phase. So how this would work is this is thirty-four thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars lump sum for construction services. That's them being on the phone and dealing with any change orders, reviewing the submittals from the contractor and taking care of all those, making sure that the contractor meets all the FAA and the state guidelines as far as it comes to the fuel systems, and then any project expenses done at four thousand, one hundred and thirty with a do not exceed cost of thirty-eight thousand, seven fifty. The contract for the construction with Alcon came in at three hundred and ten thousand. With this additional thirty-eight thousand, we're roughly at, we'll say, three fifty. The grant that we have through the state is a grand total of three hundred and fifty with our match of thirty-eight thousand, so we're at three hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollar total funding. So right now, the project is still well under budget. So with that, I'm asking council to approve, Gigi, to go ahead and sign this contract so that we can get our engineers under, under wraps for the construction phase. And any questions?
Move to approve the airport fuel farm engineer contract and have the city manager sign such.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the airport fuel farm engineering contract and have city manager sign it. Is there any more discussion?
Nita?
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the airport fuel farm energy contract and allow city manager Gigi Dennis to sign.
Thank you, council. Thank you, Rob. Nita? Are you doing it?
Yeah, I'm just trying to get the machine to turn on.
Turn off too much, too many lights.
I want to do the August financial report, which is included in your packet, council and mayor. We finished the month of August. We're at sixty-seven percent of the fiscal year. The cash balance in the main checking account in the general fund is three point four million. Water fund is three hundred and forty-four thousand. Sewer fund is four hundred and thirty thousand. We have revenue in excess of expenditures in the general fund of nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand. The sewer fund has a hundred and twenty-nine thousand. The expenditures are more than the revenue in the water fund of nine thousand, eight hundred. Total expenditures, percent of approved budget amounts, general fund, we're at fifty-five percent. The water fund is at sixty-two percent, and the sewer fund is at twenty-six percent. On the balance sheet, the comparable, comparatives for the accounts receivable, the general fund has a slight increase in utility billing, miscellaneous receivables, and the county sales tax. The water fund had a little bit of a decrease, and the sewer fund had a little bit of an increase. But it's offset by last year, the proximity loan, proximity malt loan, last, was, was in the receivables last year for a difference of about $5,000. And they just paid that off the end of July. So, the comparative for accounts payable this year, general fund, we have an increase in personnel costs, general liability insurance, fuel costs, streets capital outlay, street painting. Water had an increase in personnel, and the same thing, liability insurance, capital outlay for a power tilt trailer. And sewer shared in the cost of that power tilt trailer. The total revenue this year, we have about a 7% increase in Rio Grande County sales tax, no, sorry. Tax revenue overall was an increase of about 7% in Rio Grande County sales tax. There's about $75,000 more this year than was last year. This year, we had federal and state grants. We had the ARPA funds that I posted in August that was used to cover the fire cleanup, and that was $85,000. And then the chief had grants for vests and rifles and computers. Charges for services, we had, had an increase, a significant increase in police security, because they've been doing a lot more security for the events out there. So, so far, he's brought in $12,000 for that. Sports fees were about $7,500. And then, I've already told, mentioned this before, the building rental income is a lot higher than it was last year. We had, what hit the books in August was the donation from the Alco Foundation of the $500,000 to help us pay the lease on the Sky High Building that was actually not due till December, but we went ahead and paid it. So, the, the revenue side of that hit in August, and you'll see, the expense isn't going to hit until September. The water fund decreased this year from last year, and most of that was the receipt of a grant for the water and roadway master plan payment that we got last year. And that also applies to the sewer fund, but then we also had an increase of like $90,000 in charges for services. Expenditures, you can see that they're increased over last year. IT expenses are approximately $83,000 this year. We had increased fuel costs, Sky High Park expenses, fire cleanup, and wage and benefit are higher than last year. The monthly comparison for the revenue, you can see the big jump there, and that's mainly because of the Alco donation of the $500,000 that we received. The expenditures, like I said, you'll see the, the offset of that $500,000 will hit the books in September. So, the, the average, sorry, the average revenue, monthly revenue is 423 now, and our average monthly expenditures are 307. The budget comparison, we're under budget by about 12% in the general fund, but we have a number of debt service payments coming up that will be due by the end of December, that we're going to need to account for, so. We, like I said, I pay the Sky High lease in September. Then in October and November, we have water sewer debt for the drinking water revolving loan, and in December, we have a bond payment and the equipment purchase payment that we'll have to pay. So, we ended the month of August with a current ratio of 3.0, Anita? Sorry. 3.55 to 1, and we have 9.49 months of operating expenses in the general fund and the unassigned balance. Any questions?
You know, you already answered them for me. I mean, you're doing such a bad, better, I mean, like, it's harder and harder for me to find questions for you. I just want you to know that.
I'm trying.
Question, you're doing great. No, the one question I had was the jump in the income, but you already answered that question, so.
Because that was a large jump.
It was a large jump. I was going to say, why can't we do that every month?
Let's make it a goal. You ready to put, put in all the, all the hours and time to do that?
Really, I'm, I'm ready to put in half a million dollars. Thank you. No, I can't, I can't thank you, anything, it was great. Good job, looks wonderful.
Okay, so I would just ask that you approve the financials for August.
I'd make a motion to approve August financials.
Second. Been moved to approve August financials. Been moved and seconded to approve August financials. Is there any more discussion? Anita?
Councilor Foster?
Aye.
Councilor Locke?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve financial, August financials.
And then I also wanted to put before you, we discussed it, and back in August, we sent out the RFP for the audit. We published the notice, and I distributed the RFP August the 16th, and we asked that the RFPs be submitted to us by the 12th of September, and then it gave us a couple of weeks to review RFPs and to try to make a decision. I sent out about 11 RFPs to, I got a list from the, wow. Let there be light. I got a list from the state auditor, and I just asked for firms that were in the southern Colorado region. So, I sent out about 11 RFPs to, to firms in Trinidad, Pueblo, Kenyan City, Lamar. I sent one to Denver, and that was to Logan, our auditor for the last seven years, and then one to Alamosa. And I got two responses. One of them was from a firm in Pueblo, and they said, "Thank you, but we've already scheduled all of our audits for the year." And the other one was the RFP from Wall Smith and Bateman, and I put that in your packet. They came back about, we have been paying $14,500 every year for the audit, and they came back just for the single audit at $21,750. On the one hand, that's a significant jump in price, but Logan didn't submit an RFP. And on the other hand, Wall Smith and Bateman is a larger firm. They are local. They have about 10 people, 10 staff people that can come, that we could rely on to participate in the audit. So, I just want your thoughts on if I can go ahead and complete the contract process with Wall Smith and Bateman. If I can, I would let Kimberly know, and she would institute the engagement letter to send to us that could be signed.
I do know that Wall Smith and Bateman is a very highly regarded, very reputable business organization, group of people, folks, whatever you want to call them.
I was fortunate enough to work with them in my last job, and they were very helpful and always available all year long. Of course, Logan, Kyle was available too. But it does make a difference that they're local, they're closer.
So, this just, is not just the audit itself. You have availability to contact them and visit with them in regards to.
All year long with questions and.
So, looking at the rate schedule there at the bottom of the page, where, you know, number of professional staff hours hourly rates as follows, dot, 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 fiscal year 2022 amount, followed down 21, 7, 5, which is the number you quoted. Then what's the rest of that? Because then there's another $5,000.
The $5,000 is just if we had to have a single audit. A single audit is what's required for your federal monies. If we receive more than $750,000 in federal funds, we would be required to have a single audit. And I don't anticipate, I mean, we have some grants that are awarded, and we have grants in the airport, but I don't anticipate that we'll use all of them in the one year. They, just since I've been here in the last year, they're usually, they're broken up, and they cross over years. So, the chances of hitting that $750 are pretty slim.
Okay, thank you.
You all understand what a single audit means.
What, what means?
A single audit.
A single audit.
What audit?
The federal fund.
That's what I was thinking.
So, they'll, they'll do, Anita, correct me if I'm wrong, they'll do the audit like they normally do. And then if we ask them, or if they need to come in and just go over Public Works' water department, then they dive in and really drill in to make sure that all of the funds are appropriate, and they could do that over any of our, nope, get in the head shake.
It's all to do with federal funds. OMB is audit, is what they call it, and so typically, it's, it's your, is related to your grants. And like, for instance, Rob got the one grant, what is, it was federal, wasn't it? The C dot, or the 1.1 million?
The 1.1 million.
If, if we would spend that, all of that grant money in one year, we'd have to have a single audit on those federal funds.
Okay.
It does say in 1701, contractor, if I'm on the right pack, right spot, contractor shall be solely responsible for compliance with all applicable federal, state, and local laws, including ordinances, resolution, rules, and regulations to the city for payment of all. So, does that mean they would make sure that we stay in compliance, not just with federal, but with?
Mm-hmm. Right, with the GASB and GAAP and all of that. They make sure that we're in compliance with everything.
You had mentioned before that it's, I believe when we were talking about auditors before, you said that it's a good idea to change them periodically, and that's one reason why we've gone through this. Okay, that's.
Every three to five years, and if you're not able to change firms, like in one firm, if you have more than one partner, it's suggested that you at least change partners.
Right, okay.
Well, I don't think we have any other choice.
I was surprised, I really was.
You were surprised about what?
That.
That we didn't proceed.
That nobody turned in RFPs except for Wall Smith, and I kind of had a feeling that Kyle wouldn't. But I really thought we would get some out of 11. I would, I thought we'd at least get a couple.
Well, you know, when you get a good one, you don't leave anymore.
But, so if it's okay with the council, I could proceed with the engagement letter back.
You want a motion, or you want just a head shake?
Let's make a motion.
Move that we authorize the city treasurer, is that what your title is? To proceed with the.
Finance director.
Finance director, oh, sorry. To proceed with the letter of engagement to, is it again, Paul?
Wall Smith and.
Wall Smith and, Wall Smith and Bateman. For the audit, purpose of an audit.
Second.
Thank you.
Moved and seconded to approve financial director to finalize the Wall Smith and Bateman for the audit. Is there any discussion? Anita?
Councilor Foster?
Aye.
Councilor Locke?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to allow Anita Kenzie, Finance Director, to proceed with letter of engagement for audit services for Wall Smith and Bateman.
Staff proposals, reports, and action, city clerk.
Good evening, mayor and council. Just a few things I wanted to go over with you. A reminder, I know we're a ways away, but the 2023 Annual CML Conference is going to be held at the Gaylord Rockies in Aurora this year, June 25th through the 28th. They are going to have early bird specials that if we register before the end of the year, they're half-price on those registrations. Your phone?
And it's where?
Gaylord of the Rockies in Aurora.
I want to see how they do Gaylord of the Rockies.
I've been to one in Nashville.
So, Victor and Martha for a date now?
Gaylord of Nashville.
Yeah, it's, it's a ways off. I just wanted to, I know we're, we're a ways off. I just, it's been, I've been getting emails. You should all have been getting those emails too, just a reminder on that. This is more for you, Mr. Mayor. The mayor's summit is October 20th through the 21st. If you would like to go, I need to register you by Monday.
I'm not going to be able to attend.
Okay.
I got a house full of them.
Okay, they will be having webinars afterwards, so I will make sure that you get those webinars.
Okay, thank you.
Another class that they will be hosting is called the Effective Governance Workshop. It's December 1st. It is, it is on, it is a webinar, so we can, you can do it virtually. They will cover roles and responsibilities of municipal elected officials, engaging with the media, public official liability ethics and conflict of interest, open meetings, and Bob's Rules of Order. So, if any of you are all interested in that, please let me know, and I will get you signed up for that webinar.
I'm, I'm interested in that one, and I'm interested in the, the Gaylord of the Rockies. That just tickles me. Anyway, I'm interested in that one, but, I mean, that's quite a ways away. Can I go ahead and say I'm interested in it?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And is there a way to, okay?
Yeah, yeah, we're fine. I, like I said, I just wanted to give you guys a heads up that it was, it's approaching, so.
Okay, so, please put me down as interested in both the CML in Aurora and the Effective Governance webinar.
The next thing I wanted to ask you about, we received a form from the Monavista High School, and they were wanting to know if you would all be interested in sponsoring their yearbook. Gold level is $100, ivory level is 75, and the green level is 50.
And I suppose for sponsoring, we get an ad, little logo or something somewhere in the, in the yearbook?
Uh, yes.
And what was those tiers again?
Uh, the gold level is 100, ivory level. Uh, the gold level is a hundred, ivory level is seventy-five, green level is fifty-nine. Year, yearbook sponsorship space is limited, so sponsorship will be accepted on first come, first served basis.
Limited. I've worked on yearbooks before, I know that it's not limited.
Gold level is premium placement on sponsorship page and staff T-shirt, sponsorship sticker and social media shout-outs. Ivory level includes secondary placement on sponsorship page and staff T-shirt, sponsorship sticker, and then the green level is business name on sponsorship page and sponsorship sticker.
We try to stay real tight with the schools, so. Say, gold? Do we need a motion to?
I do need a motion.
If you're spending, when you need a motion.
To, uh, donate, um, was it gold tier or a hundred?
Gold level is a hundred dollars, mm-hmm.
Uh, to the Monavista yearbook, high school yearbook. Can we all take a group picture?
Second.
Second, sorry, second T-shirt.
I didn't know if I heard.
She thought it very loud, but she didn't say it.
It's been moved and seconded that we prepared the gold sponsorship for the Monavista High School yearbook. Is there any more discussion?
Yeah, call me Scrooge.
Well, you kinda have to go nay on this one due to your last vote, so I understand that, but.
You need it?
Council Foster?
Nay.
Council Locke?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segala?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve a hundred dollar gold level sponsorship for the Monavista High School yearbook with three ayes, one nay.
I remember the high school was not a charity.
And then, um, I have, I just have two more really quick things. Um, I kinda wanted to address the public, um, with this next item. Uh, this is a notice of etiquette for city council when it comes to public comments. During the citizen comment section of the agenda, the public is allowed to address city council. They must approach the podium and they must state their name and sign in, and they are allowed three minutes at this time. If they want more than three minutes, then they need to fill out the agenda request form, submitted to the city clerk's office two weeks prior to city council meeting. During any other agenda items that are being discussed amongst council with themselves or with staff, public comment should not be taken unless allowed by the mayor. If public comment is taken, then that public, excuse me, that citizen much, must approach the podium, state their name, and sign in. The reason for this is when I go back and I do the minutes, I mean, I'm taking notes and everything, but I also have audio and I have the YouTube. I cannot identify somebody who sits back here and makes a comment. So nine out of ten times in your minutes, you won't see that comment in there, or it'll say citizen made a comment. Um, so if those need to be reflected and you want those reflected in your minutes, then I need the audience to come forward, state their name, and sign in. So I have accurate records for your minutes. And then I just have one thing to show you really quickly. So this was, this showed up on our back porch yesterday?
Yes.
Yesterday. This is eight hundred, eight hundred and eighty-five pounds. And of course, the computer does.
It's nice. Wish that was my backyard.
The back porch here at City Hall?
Yeah.
Here at City Hall or at your house?
At City Hall. So at the Sally Court. So if you go around the backside over here, there's, uh, the, the Sally Court where the, um.
Police department?
Police department parks, some of them park and some of the staff members park back here. But this showed up out there and was delivered and says eight hundred and eighty-five pounds. So Rob and his guys came over today and DJ and they tore the box apart and pulled this out. This is a level three ballistics podium.
What? Is that going in here?
It was donated, it was donated by the magistrate courts and the US Marshals out of Durango. Um, they were the, they also were the ones that donated the, um, metal detector that's in our courtroom. So pricing this unit out is about two thousand dollars. At this point, I don't know where we're going to use it. So, but I wanted you all to see that.
The person standing behind?
Yes. So normally, um, in a magistrate court, which, who you would see standing behind this is your, um, public defender. Public defender would be standing behind this, um, your, um, bailiff.
Wow.
So I just wanted you all to see that, you know, um, the magistrate court has been extremely generous with us. They were only here a few times during the summer, but they've been looking out for us and for our courtroom. So they donate a lot of things to us. Like I said, the metal detector, this came. And then I've been told that, um, they also are looking at possibly updating our, um, sound system and our recording system in the courtroom.
Cool.
Could that carry over into here in case you had to have court in this room?
It can, it's on rollers.
No, no, I mean the sound system.
Oh, the sound system?
I could just see everybody trying to pile up behind that. And if we're getting ready to have council meetings like that.
Were you thinking, you wanna be behind that? Is that what you're saying?
It's a gift and I am truly grateful. I, I appreciate that.
Usually, like I said, it's either your public defender or your bailiff that sits behind that, not your defendants. I did some research on it today.
Okay.
So.
Wow, that's cool.
And the president.
When you said you had four hundred pounds.
One level down from the president's podium?
Yeah. I, I am extremely gr- I don't understand it exactly, but I'm extremely grateful. And I thought you were gonna show us a bear. I was all.
I was too. I said, if you have four hundred pounds beauty, I'm going to do it. It's a bear.
Well, thank you.
Thank you so much.
How would work?
That's a hard act to follow.
If it'd been a bear, it'd be a really hard act to follow.
I was gonna say, I'm not showing you a bear either, so I'm sorry. Um, you guys have my written report and I'm not gonna bore you with that. I'll just touch on a couple of main points. Um, the mosquito spray, we're done for the year. We did, um, put out a survey to kinda get a feeling for where people are. Um, that'll close, um, Monday, I guess it is. Um, so we'll start compiling those results. So once we get into twenty twenty-three, we'll start having a series of meetings with the public to kinda air some things out and we'll look at some options and, and just see what. So, um, if you haven't taken that survey, um, there are hard copies at the library. It is also on our website and on the Facebook pages, the link to the survey, very simple survey, three questions. Take you less than five minutes to go through it. So, um, for now, um, that's that. I did um, send a memo to one set. This council was copied on what I proposed with the funding there. The SEP is still moving along. Um, so those are basically it. I did do something a little out of the ordinary. Um, for me, I put a screenshot and this is something that's kinda, kinda we're gonna talk about when we hit into budget. Um, but I did put a screenshot of a dashboard for some of the new water meter stuff. Um, and really why I did it, 'cause I wanted on your guys' mindsight that our current meters are getting harder and harder to find the support. Not only for the software and the hardware as far as the interrogator and the guns and stuff that we use to do the touch reads, but also just support for the general merchandise. The heads and stuff that are on the meter bodies, they're, I, I won't say they're not making them, but they're not making as many of those as they are the automated, the AMIs and the AMRs. So we're losing that technology. The screenshot shows you not only what the girls in the office can pull up from an individual account, but in some situations, you as a consumer can pull this same data up on your phone. And you can better adjust what you do with your watering to conserve water and to work on your own bill. Um, you'll see, especially in that first, in the far left-hand corner, um, there's a box there. If you go about three quarters of the way down, you'll see where it says water budget. It's, it says wasteful. This customer, if they were using this much water, they would be wasteful with it. So they're able to use this to kinda tone down their sprinkler systems and kinda do that. Likewise, the same technology would give us daily reports of high usage. So if somebody developed a leak, it wouldn't wait until the next meter read to catch it. It would be immediate, the very next day. Soon as one gallon, so the way the systems work is if one gallon of water goes through that meter consistently every hour for a twenty-four hour period, it flags it. Because there should be periods of when you're sleeping and water's not being used. And we as a, as the, the main folks, we can set those parameters. So we can have a different parameter for the summer months, we can have a different one in the winter months to cover people running water. So we can make those flags. So if a leak does develop, it would push that meter use outside those limits. We would know immediately. We could then make a contact. And this particular system's, um, I don't wanna say it's pretty much the Cadillac, it's all cellular. Um, instead of us going out and reading, they are specifically done through the phones. So we would be able to, from our computers here in City Hall, log everybody's account, download them, and there would be no staff time out in the field other than for high usage or leaks or a failure to read. Somebody cut a wire or something. So, so good technology. We need to talk about that during budget, which is a long thing. But it, just like I said, I just wanted you to kinda see it. The other thing, and if needed, you flip some things. Um, I figured with C dot being close to being done, maybe now would be a good time to just kinda give council a real quick update on the one sixty project. So I reached out to Mario Castanada, um, with EST, and, um, they're about ninety-nine percent done with the project. They have to come back and replace one turno- um, turn arrow that wasn't done, so they're gonna be doing that. But other than that, the striping is done. They are waiting on the rectangle rapid flashing beacon, um, to complete the installation and remove the existing traffic signal. I think that's been really probably a talk for our public. I know Dale's been hit several times with what is it? So I just found a little short video, three minutes, that kinda tells everybody what an RRFB actually is and what we're going to, so.
In general, a safe place for pedestrians to cross the road is at a well-marked controlled location, often at an intersection. But in two thousand eighteen, seventy-four percent of pedestrian fatalities occurred at mid-block locations between intersections. So how do we reduce fatalities at these locations and provide safe transportation for every pedestrian? Rectangular rapid flashing beacons, or RRFBs, can be an effective option. Driver yielding rates vary by location, but RRFBs can reduce pedestrian crashes by up to forty-seven percent.
A rectangular rapid flashing beacon is a pedestrian actuated device with yellow rectangular flashing lights to help bring attention to a pedestrian using an uncontrolled park crosswalk.
The goal is to alert drivers that a pedestrian is attempting to cross the street.
The main reason that enhances safety is by increasing the visibility of the pedestrian. And when others yield, then typically we see a lot fewer pedestrian crashes, which is the whole reason that we do the crosswalk as well as the, the rapid flashing beacon.
RRFBs can improve driver yielding rates, which results in a safer crossing for pedestrians. They are most effective when installed in line with existing pedestrian travel behavior.
It's at a mid-block location, and we've found success in being able to provide safety treatments at the locations where the pedestrians are already crossing.
For maximum safety, RRFBs should be used in combination with other low-cost safety treatments.
And we typically deploy them with other, and, and other enhancements to increase visibility. So additional signing, we'll do additional pavement markings such as an advanced yield marking or advanced stop marking, uh, as well as a pedestrian record filing if the location calls for it. Additional enforcement or education is often part of that as well.
We've also found it possible to install street lighting at the curb sides of the, uh, approach and departure sides for the pedestrians. And it just adds again additional guidance so that, uh, pedestrians could be seen.
RRFBs offer a flexible, effective tool to enhance pedestrian safety.
So the RRFB being relatively cheap, being relatively easy to install, easy to maintain, low cost, little if any right of way or utility adjustments are normally required. So it, it's a, it's a treatment that can be delivered very quickly and to fulfill that need.
Contact FHWA for more information on using RRFBs and other measures to provide safe transportation for every pedestrian.
So I was hoping that kinda helped maybe explain what they're for. So they'll remove the? They'll remove the overhead stoplights and then those will be in those areas. We'll have to probably do a little bit enforcement just to educate the people. When they were saying the advanced stop bars, if you look at the pavement, you'll see the little triangle white things. Those are where the stop bars, that's where you're, you're supposed to stop. So. I just thought that video was kinda show everybody and kinda explain why, why it was chosen and why it was done. It's right there, mid-block crossing, right at a school. It's a perfect place for one of those type of things. And what they found versus a regular, um, stoplight is those, when, when they get activated, when they flash, they are extremely bright. Um, they, they call more attention than somebody with the, just, 'cause they, most people don't think of a stop light mid-block. So those are far better at making sure people actually stop. And we are talking, most of the people that cross there are youngsters. They are kids, so.
What about for Sky High?
That would be another perfect location, especially there from the Stampede parking lot over, especially with, you know, the events that we have out there. And as Stephanie continues to have more and more events, that's another really good place for. And compared to price-wise, they're considerably cheaper than trying to put a stoplight in.
About what is the cost?
About three hundred and fifty thousand.
What did you say?
Three hundred and fifty thousand?
Stoplight's gonna be about seven fifty. Considerably cheaper, quarter million dollars for one of those cable things.
Holy smokes.
So, um, with that, I will open up. Twenty-five dollars an hour.
I, you know, I can do it during the week.
I might open it up to any questions you might have on my, um, report.
Um, not really on the report, but just kinda curious, um, about this intersection over here. Um, 'cause there's like a ton of people walking like to the store and, you know, like, there's like no sidewalks, no anything, some, just, I don't know.
Some of that is what, um, DJ's been working on. We were, we had a miscommunication today. We were supposed to have a meeting with C dot to kinda talk some of that. Um, but what we need to do is look at C dot and look for some grants that will took, um, designated crosswalks all along one sixty. Um, we have some people, most of the kids are trying to cross. Um, DJ's looking at some other grants such as safe routes to school. We can do some crosswalks that would line up the high school and Marsh Elementary and kinda do some things that make it a little safer there. Um, we can also look, if council wants, and it's a budget thing, for twenty twenty-three, that if you would like us to take our sidewalk program that we initiated, we could turn that to start trying to get some connectivity towards the schools and do some things on that on our own funding. So those are all options that you as council have. So.
Cool.
So those are all things. Um, maybe I just touched base, um, some of Facebook comments. Sixth Avenue was a gift. Um, the county had an equipment failure and we got the asphalt. It was getting really, really cold, so I have it scheduled with ACI. We're gonna come in next week and kinda straighten that area of Sixth Avenue up a little bit, put some more asphalt on there and square that. That was the area that was hit hardest with all of the work. That was the area that was hit hardest with all of the work that CDOT was doing when they're initial, when they were having trucks, plus the area from Terror to Soul. It had a lot of ruts and stuff, so we're trying to fill that. So we will fix that. I know Facebook has been lit up a few times with that. So just for the public to know, that is still well on our thing. And it was a real quick... And unfortunately, the asphalt, when you're dealing with hot mix, you only have a short period of time to get it on the ground. But we are working to make sure that looks and rides are much better than what it does now.
I had a citizen come to me in regards to mosquitoes spray. Very supportive of the mosquitoes spray. Thinks it's great. Morbid joke, just so you know. But she said, "The light on that truck sends my dog into friggin', like a seizure."
Oh, no.
So that would be my only request, to shut the light off. I was like, "Whatever, just drop it." But I had to bring that to her attention. I've got those kind of rumors.
That's a first. I haven't heard that one before. It's been contentious, and I don't understand it. We'll try to figure out what the people want, and that's what we can do.
Based on what our conversation has been, if we have to go that other route, it's going to be more expensive.
I'm going to reach out, and I've already kind of talked to Gigi. I'm going to reach out to Alamosa, kind of get a feeling of what their mosquito district is using. We're going to look at the entire program, you know, testing for mosquitoes.
They can use essential oils.
I was thinking something like sandalwood, maybe. Sandalwood, what is it?
Lavender.
Lavender. That's what I was thinking. Lavender is a good one. It's a natural repellent to mosquitoes. So, yeah.
So are marigolds and zinnias. We could just plant those all over town.
All over town. So like I said, there's a lot of things we can do. I just, I don't know how to make everybody happy. And putting the no-spray list on, I thought was trying to do that, but it has evolved and morphed into, it's a nightmare for my person. It really is. So we'll see what the citizens want. Thank you, council. Have a good night.
Thank you, Rob.
City manager report.
Where'd GT go?
Good evening. Can you see me?
Good evening.
We thought we had a meeting today with CDOT and was going to spend the afternoon out in the field, and that didn't come to fruition. So thus, I apologize for wearing jeans to our council meeting. Along with the mosquitoes, Victor and I went to see the Tri-County Senior Citizen Complex the other day and had lunch with them. And we asked, just for a show of hands, how many they liked the mosquito spraying. And all but one raised their hand. So now there's only two in the room. No, that's not true. There's probably about 15 maybe for lunch. And then we took a tour. Then Carla had invited us over because in our budget, we helped support the senior citizens with some funding. And they're going to be asking for an increase. And they have been working pretty extensively with getting grant funding. I think the Alcott Foundation has contributed an enormous amount to start replacing all of those windows, to take out the bathtubs and make a walk-in shower tub situations and trying to help spruce things up. That building was built in 1981, and they had single-pane windows for the last 40-some years. So it should make a significant difference. And then, of course, with the SEP project that Rob spoke of with CD-PHE, that's where we're planning on making the investment. So it should help them out. The Sky High Pavilion has gotten started. Alcon has been out there getting started with it. So that's exciting. Hopefully, by the middle of next month, that'll be completed. And then I've given the mayor a letter to sign with me asking a corporate sponsor to give them the naming rights on it. And if they say no, then I'll look and send it to somebody else, and we'll just see what we can do. With the funding that they would pay for the naming rights would go to future capital improvements there at Sky High. This last week, we attended, Martha and I, attended the Upper Rio Grande Economic Development Dinner. Tony Gagliardi from the National Federation of Independent Business, he's the state director, came down and spoke. And it was a nice evening. It was good to see people beginning to come back to Upper Rio Grande and begin to get engaged. And so it was a nice mixture between Monty and Del Norte. And I'm not sure if South Fork was there, but at least our other two communities. We've had the first kind of initial peek into the Rural Economic Economy Grant. They had a, I don't know if you know, it was three or four-hour meeting the other day. And DJ and Rob are on that with me, as well as some other community folks, as we're going to have to be getting our arms around this and have community meetings to hear what people are looking for within rural economies. So this grant was only started last year. So they had the winner, the winning communities from last year, as well as then the winning communities for this year. We're all on the same Zoom meeting together. And last year's committees were talking about what they've put in place. And so it was rather inspiring and interesting because this is for communities that were probably as small as 1,000 for their population and maybe up to 15,000. So they really were targeting smaller communities and seeing what we can come up with. And so it'll be kind of exciting to see what we want to do here in Monta Vista. And then we'll have to go out and raise the funds, write grants, to get it all pulled together. I had the pleasure of hosting the president of Colorado, the University of Colorado, and three of their Board of Regents and three of their staffers here a couple weeks ago. We took them, they took a tour to go through Grower Shipper Potato and got to see... They met with one of the owners of Grower Shipper. So he brought the potatoes in. They got to see them as the sorting from the outside, now they get fed in, and then how they go through the whole system and get washed and then sized and tagged and get ready to ship out to the grocery stores. So for these city folks, that was really interesting. We allotted about 30-minute tour, and they were there about an hour and a half. So we got way behind schedule. They were supposed to then meet with our three superintendents between Monty, Sergeant, and Del Norte. And superintendent's got tired and left. So we didn't get to have that education discussion. But they did meet with SLVGO and San Los Valley Behavioral Health and took a nice tour of Sky High. So that went well. And that was the same evening as our CML banquet. So thanks Dale and Martha for being able to attend, and we had a nice little crowd out there for that. Commissioner Glover held a meeting this last week with myself and then a representative from Del Norte, as well as from South Fork. And they're still kind of looking at, they have a little bit of their R funding, and not that they promised anything, but they were wondering what projects the three communities had going on that maybe they could help partner a little bit. And so I told them about the earmark that we've applied, and it looks really strong that we're going to get that for the generator and the RV spaces and the portable showers out at Sky High. And so they may be interested in helping us with that because our part's going to be around $250,000 that we're going to have to, I'm going to have to pound on doors to raise. I want to make sure that you all have on your calendars. Next week, we're having a budget session, work session, on Thursday by 3:00 on the 13th. Probably about two hours. Would you like us to bring in some pizza or sandwiches or something?
Sure.
If we eat, you guys will take longer.
You might come if there's food.
Fair enough. Okay, we'll make sure that we get something.
We might come if this is our job.
Oh, that's right.
And then we still, Nita and I'll be working next week, and we'll get the official email out to you guys. But November 4th and 5th will be our city planning, brainstorming, goal-setting meeting. We'll start that at 5 o'clock on November the 4th. And what I'm thinking is we'll go till 8:00 or 8:30, and that will be with dinner. And then we'll have a hot breakfast the next morning about 7:30. Get started by 8:00. Go from 8:00 to 9:00, get everybody home. So we are having an outside facilitator come in who has experience in municipal government. And so I think he'll help us all stay on track. That's with council, all of our directors, and our city attorney, so.
And this is just where we bring what we'd like to see worked on or...
Yep.
Sort of our dream sheet?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah. Right now, my dream sheet is about this long. And I've got these wonderful staff people behind me saying, "We've got too many arms and too many buckets, you know? So what is it that you guys really want us to focus on so that that's what we can concentrate?" Because we're all being stretched pretty thin and trying to look and figure out, you know, what dollars will match whatever project that we're thinking of. And so we need to have, I think, more strategically on what the outcomes are that we want for the city so that we can target our energies towards those. So that'll be it. And then I just want to make one comment about Councilman Foster's votes against the two organizations you all applied for. I, my recommendation is I agree with him because there are, you know, even with the school, you think about, there's the football, there's the basketball, there's the wrestling, there's the cheerleaders, there's the volleyball, there's the band, there's the, there's the, there's the... And so we don't have anything written down in policy as far as how you should designate your funds. And at least with the school, there's accountability there. The other organization, although I highly agree and support them on what they're doing for our troops, but they aren't a 501(c)(3), and there's no accountability on how they spend $1,000. And so we either need to come up, I can come up with some sort of criteria, or you guys need to just think about, you know, we can write lots of letters of support, we can show our own enthusiasm, we can be out there as our own cheerleaders for some of these organizations. But there should probably be some sort of parameters so that when the American Cancer Society is doing a walk downtown and they want funding, how do you tell them no? Or how do you tell no for the Alzheimer's organization? Or how do you tell, say no to the Girl Scouts? I mean, whatever it is. So I think that we should probably, you guys should give us some direction, either to come up with some sort of criteria for you, or you should really think about what do we want to do with our city funds in this fashion? So that's it. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Gigi. Council committee, city commission, and council reports. Martha, I'll start with you.
Well, okay. And no, I have not been on my phone all night. My computer died, and I've been following my packet with this. So that's what's been going on.
And it's in the budget.
I know it is. And that's fine, and I didn't mind using my phone, and we're all good. I just didn't want anybody to think that I was being rude and up here, you know, playing Uno while y'all were having a meeting.
There's Sedoko. I could see it.
I am, I just want to express again gratitude. I am continually impressed with some of the citizens in this town and more, and the group seems, all the various groups seem to be growing. That, I mean, they're just stepping up. They're not really asking the city. They're not coming to us and going, "Hey, we need answers to this." They're saying, "Hey, we've got an answer. Will you let us do it?" You know, that's a whole different dynamic. That is a whole different dynamic. That is, what's the word I'm looking for? Initiative. And they're taking it. And I'm so impressed. Mystic Valley Art Council, the Community Fund, Food Bank, Optimistics. I'm sure I'm leaving somebody out. But they're coming together. A lot of these nonprofits are even coming together to do a Halloween, not a trunk-or-treat, a Halloween festival. Just, we're surpassing. Monta Vista, when I say we, I mean Monta Vista. We're surpassing a trunk-or-treat. It's going to be a festival. I'm not even sure what all the details are yet. So please make plans to attend that. I would encourage each of you as an individual, all of our citizens watching out there on YouTube, YouTube plan, please bring your car. Get in touch with somebody from the Mystic Art Council or somebody from Optimistic's or somebody from the Food Bank. And let's get you a spot down there on the first two blocks of Adams Street and hand out candy and be a part of this. It's a safe place, we hope. Nothing's a guarantee. It's a safe place for the children to be. You're out there in the open. It's hard to do something nefarious. Which leads me to my second thing that I want to talk about. Nefarious. We have some nefarious people, and they are showing up in strong numbers right now. You know what? We've got to, our police department is working as hard as they can. And I will admit that I have recently had to eat a little bit of crow because I was upset with them. And they're knocking it out of the park with what, working with what they've got, they are knocking it out of the park. But we, as individuals, need to help. And it can be something as simple as something my husband and I have started doing at night before we go to bed. We let the dogs out. You know why? Because they're going to bark. Normally, we don't like to be the neighbors with the barking dogs. But nefarious people are walking around to see who's got a dog in their yard. So before we go to bed at night, we let the dogs out. We let them bark for a good five, 10 minutes. It's not great. I mean, I'm not saying, "Please let your dogs bark all day long." But for a few minutes, because that way the people know the ones that would do something bad are like, "Yeah, don't go to that house because they've got dogs. I heard them a while ago." You know, put up motion sensor lights. Just turning on a porch, if you can afford to, please put up a motion sensor light. Porch lights are good. Porch lights also point out where the shadows are in the yard. So a porch light can actually help them get around your yard because it already shows where the shadows are cast. A motion sensor doesn't do that. And they get caught. If you're comfortable going out and confronting someone, if they're in your yard, they're walking across your yard, they're walking in your alley, go out and be friendly. Maybe they're just taking a nightly walk. Maybe they were just having a hard time going to sleep and wanted to get some fresh air. Or maybe they're looking to do something bad. But you can go out and say, "Hi, just noticed you're walking behind my house. You okay? Need anything?" They know they've been seen. They know you can describe them. They know that you know what time they were there. So they're going to move on. Please lock your car. Opening your door, taking your stuff in, your stuff out is theft. Opening your door, taking your stuff in, your stuff out is theft, it is not breaking and entering, they don't have to break anything, you left your door open. Stop it. Stop leaving your doors unlocked, please. These are things that we, as citizens, can do to help our crime rates start to go back down again. I don't like the trend that I'm seeing, I don't blame our local PD. It's us, we need to step up as citizens. We all do, we need to learn who our neighbors are. I think we need to get a really good neighborhood watch program going, I haven't figured out how to do that yet, but I'm working on it, I'm working on trying to find ideas, trying to find how does it work, how do other towns do it? But I think we can do it. I'm sure we can, we are Montevista, and I'm sure we can. So, that's all we've got, whole lot of good people doing good things, and we got some bad people doing bad things. So let's support these people, and let's get rid of these. How about that?
Well, it's the best time of year, leaves are pretty, go outside, take a hike, rub some sunshine in your face.
I second that. Kind of the same thing with what Martha said, you know, just be on the lookout, there's a, it's getting cold out there. Also, dogs, get them some shelter, get them some heat, or bring them in, you know, because my dog's already been scratching at the door, and I'm like, "Oh, it's cold out there, let's go, come on," you know? So, dogs have feelings too, cats have feelings too. That's all, I'm good. Thank you, guys.
Monty Strong, see something, say something. I had a little incident in my alley, and alls I did was take a flashlight and shine it on. I don't know what they did wrong, or whatever, but they left a vehicle sitting in the alley in the street and took off, like, and I never said a word, alls I did was shining the flashlight on, so. Monty Strong, we will recess the meeting until October twentieth, six p.m., right here.